I'm going to call the September 10th meeting of the ESCU Planning Commission. You'll stand with me and soon reply. We have the call.
Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen.
Here.
Commissioner Romo. Chairman Span.
Here.
Commissioner McNair. He is absent. Commissioner Garcia is absent. Commissioner Lawson.
Here.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes for our last meeting?
We'll make a motion to approve the minutes for last meeting.
Second.
Get a manual for Commissioner Cohen's in problem. Thank you. We have five answers.
Five answers. Written communication?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. On the D S for you this evening, we have two items. The first, actually, they're both related to item G1 on the agenda this evening. The first is a legal description noted as Exhibit A. And the second is an email received from a Mr. Scott Riley in favor of the proposal.
Thank you. How about neighborhood meetings?
We do not have any scheduled at this time.
Oral communication. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, see none. We'll move right on to G1. Does anybody have anything to disclose here? P H G 18 dash 0021.
Yes, Commissioner, Jane Paul, Senior Planner in the planning division. It's good to see you again. Tonight, this item involves a one lot subdivision map to support 32 unit airspace condominium development. There is a master and precise development plan requested for the project along with a development agreement. It's on approximately 0.45 acre parcel on the Mercado district of downtown Pacific Park area. This is the site here. It's approximately 0.4 acres, comprised of two parcels. Previously, it was a gas station that has since been reworked and also auto repaired. The project is located on the floor of Ran Avenue and it runs onto Ran. Ran Avenue provides driveway access into the property here. There's also driveway access off Second Avenue that runs on the west here. Part of the project is the purchase of a, I wouldn't say a remnant piece, but it was a parcel of land occupied by the city that was cut off by Second Avenue. The main portion of that parcel is on the south side of Second Avenue. So they're requesting to purchase that and incorporate that into the project. And also, a portion of this alley here that is on the southern side of the property that will be incorporated into the project to provide direct access to open space and open markets. So it could also support the existing utilities, many of them in the alley. Access for a little longer will be provided to the site from Ran Avenue on the north and from Second Avenue on the west. Primary access now will be provided from a new driveway using this parcel from Second Avenue, which will be right in right of our home. You can see surrounding uses are a mix of primarily commercial uses in and around the Mercado and Gateway District neighborhood. The ESCU Transit Center is located one block north of the property, extending to the northwest of the site. Again, the property is located within the Mercado district of the downtown Pacific Park. Mercado district allows for mixed-use development with density up to 100 real units per acre and four stories in height located here. Required ground floor commercial residential on the upper floors. This is a recent photo of the site and you can see the surrounding uses and the vacant site. The foundations are still there for some of our purposes of the construction and auto repair that is being moved to service to go in and out of the site. The project has three components. Number one is a tentative subdivision map, that is to consolidate parcels into one lot for airspace condominium units. The final map will include the purchase of approximately 2,275 square feet of that city on parcel and vacation of a portion of the alley. That will require several parcel action and the final map will incorporate those parcels into these final design. The master and precise development plan allows for flexibility in modifications, development standards, and deviations from standards of a project. This will accommodate the proposed 32 unit condominium development, which will be four stories in height and 57 feet in height. The downtown specific plan from Mercado district allows facilities to four stories in height and 60 feet in height. So it will meet the requirements of those standards. It will include a ground level garage and approximately 300 square feet of flex office space that will be used for leasing and potentially can be used converted to office space or small retail use in the building. The garage will contain approximately 43 parking spaces. Like I said before, 300 square feet of flex office space. Request includes a reduction apartment, approximately 18 spaces or 29 and a half percent deduction. That is allowed through the plant development in accordance with the downtown specific plan. However, it has to be backed up by a parking study, just important to use. And I'll get into that further in the parking requirements of downtown specific plan. So that is prepared. They're also requesting a reduction in open space, approximately 1,428 square feet, to meet the densities as envisioned in the downtown specific plan. To do that, an open space reduction in the downtown specific plan is allowed, subject to development. So you have to offset the amount of open space that you reduction through several different methods. You can buy additional space. You can provide public open space in the same amount or pay an end fee. And they have elected to pay an end fee, approximately $20,000 used for other park open space recreation as a public benefit for the community. The project will provide approximately 71.1 real units per acre with a 32 units. The downtown specific plan will allow 100 developments per acre and 45 developments maximum yield based on the lot size of the property. So they will be in comparison with the destiny provisions, height requirements, and the good income for the project. Again, there's a development agreement that will facilitate the reduction of the space for the downtown specific plan and also a credit for art pieces, approximately 30 cents per square foot, because they will be incorporating a dynamic art feature into one of the building spots that are there on the property. The site plan, briefly, the ground floor will include the parking garage, which will take access off Second Avenue in this location. It will be gated and asked to be provided from Second Avenue, but also from the alley that intersects Pine Street to the east. The approximately 4, 2,45 acre site, containing 32 condos, about 300 square feet of flex area here. Ran Avenue will provide access to the office and to resident access to the elevators and to the garage and also stairs. Official access into the garage provided from a locked doorway off Second Avenue and also a gated entry in this area of Ran Avenue up to the upper second floor podium. Primary access to garage, again, will be gated off Second Avenue. Garage will also contain 43 parking spaces and additional four motorcycle spaces. It will contain utility rooms, separate enclosed storage areas, fully present, and the trash enclosures, which will be inside the garage also. The architecture chosen for the project is a art deco slash modern type of design, not contemporary. It contains these art deco offices compatible with several buildings in the Mercado district and throughout the downtown area. Also provides that appropriate transition from the more contemporary designs surrounding the area of buildings under construction to the downtown and Mercado area. You can see here, they have a number of square and rounded elements on corners, various towers, materials, complicated convex corner elements in here with tile, stucco, and stone elements. And this is that kinetic dynamic art feature that we go into the building that we face in Ran Avenue. This is the view from Ran Avenue and this is the view along which. Brighting materials in lighter muted tones consistent with that art deco modern theme. And you can see the various roof elements. This is the view from Ran Avenue. And they will now be second floor podium, which is landscape area, open to the sky, a roof deck, landscape area, the bridge that goes across to provide residence access between the fourth floor here. They also will be incorporating a green wall on several of the elevations because the ground floor garage requires ventilation, natural ventilation, fully cars and circulation in there. So to do that along Ran Avenue, they will be utilizing more of a roof system, but designed to look more short form, designed to match the short form elements in here. But they have to be open to ventilation. To help screen that investment level, they will be installing an additional race planner along Ran Avenue building furnish that will allow clients and variety of landscape to actually stream over portions of those vents to prevent pedestrian views into that lower garage floor area. This is the view, again, along Ran Avenue. You can see that second floor podium and the roof deck, landscape level, and how the project from Ran Avenue already associates to Ran Avenue has the athletic activities facing Ran Avenue, which is kind of the vision of the Mercado district and pedestrian activities in that Ran Avenue district. This is the entrance to the residential units and the entrance into the office area. This is the view along Quit Street. Again, they will be, they will have open garage empty there, but to help incorporate that in the project design and break up that massive scale, they'll be incorporating these living or garden walls into the design that would be often meshed on as you have any assets. That will allow for plants to grow on it, but allow ventilation to come through them to block outdoor views into the garage. Here you can see the convex and concave features on the corner elements here on the corner of Second and Quitts. And here are convex and square and concave elements along the Quit Street elevation and that art feature in this area here. Just a quick view of samples of what those green living walls can look like when established for a project and one of the examples, a type of material that will be used for this project. This also gives you a quick view of that art feature that will be installed and what a dynamic feature is. It's sort of color shape shifting, moving moves with wind and other elements. You may have seen them on your way to the city airport. You get off the Sats Pass or down in that area. There's several new buildings that downtown install on their building facades. This is the elevation to the east. And this is the elevation along Second Avenue, this will be the gated garage. Several events will include the landscape features in this location here. Parking required. They are requesting through the development agreement and allow from downtown specific plan a reduction for it. However, you have, they have prepared a parking advance study to support that. That will, that demonstrates that lower parking issue would be appropriate for higher density mixed-use transit oriented garages. As this project is located approximately one block, just a thousand feet from Transit Center, it can take advantage of those smart road and sand deck transit oriented parking requirements, which would support the request of deduction of 18 parking spaces. However, we want to ensure that there isn't a parking issue as these one and especially the two-story bedders start to lease out or purchase. So one of the requirements to support that is the project has to do a parking, additional parking analysis and monitoring plan. They also will add options to install tandem or parking lifts in the project. They will be doing one as a demonstration project and monitor to see how efficient that works. Instead of having tandem spaces on the floor, their parking lifts, where you can park them and pull your car up and I'll show you what those look like. They'll also be installing the infrastructure to install initially 18 of those if during the monitoring period they are necessary. They also have to pose upon proper securities with us to install those as those are monitored during the initial lease period for the project. This is what the parking lifts look like in this garage. They're called auto steppers. You drive up on them. They can, and the roof level in the garage is about 1 and 1/2 tall, so they will accommodate a full-size truck, not a lifted truck, and a standard car at approximately 1 and 1/2. This is an example of Toyota's home and a min-size or smaller car that will be auto steppers. Can social landscape plans include a combination landscaping on the ground floor? They will install a new landscape planner along the roofing furnish, or this is where the garage needs to be. Also, a race planner along the which to be furnished. And that's a design at twofold, to provide the appropriate amount of streets, landscaping along the building. Also, it's a biofiltration. They have to treat their storm water and the storm water that comes off the roof decks and the roof will be piped into that biofilter, filter into the storm water system. Also, they will be providing some enhanced landscaping with the portion of Second Avenue that they will purchase in this area here. It will take a smaller stormwater feature, the access to the project. In this area here, the alley will provide for deliveries. So if you have residents that come with their delivery trucks to move in, there's actually a spot for them, enhanced delivery trucks or other type of deliveries that they can't use the street that has Uber, human, they can use it here. Also provides access into the garage or staging area for the trash bins that need staged, by management, and put back in the garage. Quickly, I'll just go through the four planes. This is the second level and each shows the landscape area, podium level, out to Ran Avenue in this location here. It will be up over to the sky, this is the third floor. And you can see how the cross-sections work. This is a view from Ran Avenue with the podium, upper level roof deck and little bridge that goes across from Ran Avenue. This is the roof level deck. It will put additional landscaping, a bridge across it, so each residence will have block around the entire project and go right across. A pretty good visual energy for the project. And the roof level, all of the mechanical units will be up on that roof level in mechanical and quarter areas. The development, development is required to support the reduction of open space. The downtown specific plan allows a 50% reduction. They're asking for about 16% reduction, approximately 1,428 square feet. As you remember, last month, the planning commission had approved a modification to downtown specific plan with Quit Street seeing the project. That would reduce higher density multifamily developments down to approximately 200 square feet. That's an order as we've been looking at this project. It's very difficult to meet the open space requirements and provide those of higher densities and parking. So it is being revised down for a higher density to approximately 200 square feet, which the project potentially can take advantage of. It will not be effective as assigned project goes through the process to move forward, the act is elected to pay an interview of approximately $12.50 per square foot, which comes out to roughly $20,000 for the project and for the city to pay for additional parking or other parking maintenance, which is actually a total benefit to the state. They're also asking for a credit in parking in exchange for the parking should have to be built on the project, approximately 30 cents per square foot, which is the development fee that should be paid for a car in the city. Staff prepared a parking analysis for the project. The project is accepted with an environmental review. We've prepared a more extensive evaluation of all the items for elements in that environmental review that is part of that document which is included in the staff report. As the project moves forward, the partners do not have any significant debt on the project as condition. Therefore, we need approval of the planning commission resolution for the plant development, master and precise development plan, development agreement terms, and adoption of the environmental determination for the project at full sales disposition.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions to stand?
Mr. Paul, every time you make a presentation about American safety, I am smarter than this. Review a bunch of my projects as well. I don't have any opinion before the city, but in the past. Not sure if everybody knows, my wife may not have treated you, just treated you, but I mean, that is, that's well researched, well presented, organized, easy to understand in fact, yes, thank you very much. I had a question, the tandem, how are those acting?
There is a electric slash hydraulic unit that is installed. They can be installed individually or I think based on the inspections I looked at, you can run a lot of them with that. So they have to have a roof power. And the project is required to install all of the infrastructure to run the市政 project. So if they do begin to install, they're ready to go.
Because that was an obviously novel approach. That's personal error, I guarantee. I think there'll be probably a parking theme tonight, parking deficit for short term. But that's, that's a really novel approach. I'm sure that takes room. What a smart job on incorporating the floor road for that living wall. I hadn't seen that either in town. And to be clear, their study does support, or is there a companion study that pulls the fourth air position of 29 and 1/2 for 18 spots?
In the standard, where I included the parking analysis provided by Mark Baker, that was based on sending guidelines for smart road projects which should use in close proximity to transit and how if you're in those areas, you're close to a custom transit, bicycle facilities, commercial areas where you've got certain amenities, amenities downtown that you can walk to. The parking ratio for one and two bedroom units is actually lower than the standard. So the study supported, the project support 40, go down to 40 parking spaces. It can provide 43 with an additional. If you go up and show this, four motorcycle spaces. They don't count the motorcycle spaces, but they will be additionally provided in the garage. Also, they're taking that driveway off Ran Avenue and converting those into complete on street spaces. We don't count those for the project, but they're in front of the project. This is addition to mark in the short term during the daytime and then potentially allow them for the long term after the peak. Users are not so resistant, potentially can use them overnight. But during the day, the commercial user might want to use them to support businesses along Ran Avenue, they're available for that.
Again, that excites. Thank you. Wonderful presentation. Does the 43 spaces, does that include the tandem?
No, the 43 spaces are just the center on the garage floor. Potentially, if they install the infrastructure, you could install an additional 18 lifts, which would actually meet the, more than meet the parking.
Thank you. One question. They're called condos, but I heard something about leasing. Are these going to be for sale or are they going to be rented?
The outlet has, I'll have to explain that further. They'll have to record the subdivision map for potential condos. But the final economy map is actually when they recorded that, it's going to be the area of Park of the State, Community Times. So it's set up for kind of the development. They have the selection of homeowners associations. Have you seen that? They can rent it in or lease it out until such time as a assigned to seller.
I know we have a lot of that same situation in other projects downtown. I was really happy to see these condos and I hope that they move forward as far as making them available to sell, because I think that's the trick to the density that we want to look. I want to see home ownership, private ownership versus renting, but that's, that one broke. Thank you so much. Any other questions?
In the staff report, there were some elevations that you didn't show today that were showing the actual difference of heights between the two buildings, the existing buildings and less buildings. Do you have those available?
Actually, I have that one in 103 and. And if you go perspective. Here, I do. So you can see the building at four stories in height here and a 15 building adjacent to the single story and then further down, it's approximately two to two and a half stories in this area where cover story uses.
Now can we see the center city Parkway view? I guess that would be the east view you showed us. Please.
This one?
That's a pretty stark.
This one here. And we had a discussion regarding it because it will be built on the property foundation. So you have to meet certain fire requirements for openings and firewall. The special we had, as you can see in this picture here, this is approximately the height of the adjacent single story and fencing. Beyond that, you've got about two to two and a half stories for use in. So what they have done is varied with line on the upper elements here and incorporated the initial story lines and materials to match this tower element at the corner of Ran Avenue and the eastern portion of the project and try to incorporate those materials and colors, perhaps anticipating if those ever are redeveloped, you get another higher rise building, two, three, four stories that she says.
Right, I understand. For going that redevelopment for a while. People driving through ESCU Peter can see that back door pretty dramatically every single time you drive down to Center City. And I realized that store being locked portion, not to be able to that perspective. But that's a pretty stark view of it. Because the front is awesome. And every elevation is awesome except for that. And I don't know, is there something that you needed to address that? When I saw that, I was super pleased with everything. When I got around to the backside and I saw the perspective you coming down, this thing's going to cap over in that neighborhood by a bunch of hotels redeveloped. I'm sure whoever owns those two pieces of property will reach and get towards that, but who knows when that will occur. So that was one of the concerns that I saw there. It's in black and white, so I don't know if the tones are going to be different or what's going to be that, it's totally going to look like. Different materials up there on that block. The parking is not, I believe in 20 years, parking is not going to be as big an issue as people are making, like more people will be done autonomous. And then the three spaces out front of the facility, those will be.
But they would have, perhaps, short-term limitations.
Okay, and those are on the brand every side?
During, during this hours, so residents have parking in them all day long.
And that material will match the material to the parking too, I guess, the east or?
Right, we have the issue, right now, it's color matched in sort, but the parking lines should match.
Okay, all right. Just a couple of concerns.
I do have one question. And again, I want to echo Commissioner Watson's comments about your presentation, Mr. Paul, because it's always, always a pleasure to listen to your presentations. The one question I've got is on the public art side of things. I didn't see that there is a condition, and maybe there wasn't, I just missed it, that that is held in perpetuity, that that's got to be maintained, that it could be changed over time, but maintained in perpetuity as some sort of public art. Is that correct, and was there a condition?
I, I believe there is one, it's in the development period.
Okay, and I may have just missed it.
I think, I'll be good when there, because it has to be maintained by the H O A perpetuity of life on the project, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you so much, it was excellent. I'm going to open the public hearing, I have some speaker slips here, going to ask you to approach the podium and state your name for the record, and try to keep your, limit your comments to three minutes. I'm going to call the applicant person, not going to limit you if you have whatever time you need to take. Ed McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. I'm Ed McCoy, I'm one of the principal owners of this property. I think it's important to know that I'm a life, almost like a resident of Escanito. I've lived here for over thirty years, I raised my kids here, I still live here. I witnessed downtown in that period of time, I've seen what's happening, and we're very excited to be part of the revitalization of downtown. The city's made a commitment with the improvements on Grand Avenue, and we're happy to be part of that, and want to capitalize on that, help the city achieve what the goal of the purpose of progress that you're going to downtown revitalization. Also, would like to thank staff, Jay's done a great job, he's been prominent, as well as Mike Strong, build staff have been great to work with, Mo and Tom staff have been great as well, so I think everybody's contributed to make this quite a good project, that I think I'm all proud of. Additionally, my background, I was a city planner, I am currently Senior Vice President for National All-American Development Committee, that does indoor development in the rest of states. So this type of project is something that I'm very familiar with, we do it all the time, and I think that's why I'd like to talk to some of the constraints on this site, causes to have requested parking aggression. The site, as Jay said, is over a hundred units an acre. It also has a four-story height limit, sixty foot max. So the only way that you get more parking on this site is to go underground. To go underground, there's a hot water table in the farthest city, and additionally, the cost is so high, construction cost is so high, that the only way that you can offset the cost to go underground is to add units on top. But we can't do that with a four-story height limit. So this property is put in a box, that's required enough to give the parking aggression. Additionally, a three-hundred unit per, a three-hundred square foot for an open space apartment is a suburban requirement. The city, as the commission has done, has recognized that, and the movement to reduce that, not in two hundred square feet, which we would comply with, but because of our position, we want to move this project forward, and we're willing to pay the twenty thousand dollars regardless of the order changes in two hundred square feet, so again, that's a contribution we're bringing to the city, that everything is a benefit. One other thing that was mentioned in the discussion is that we are going to be upsizing the water line from Mallard Parkway to Second Avenue, from six inches to twelve inches. It's a six-hundred-foot water line extension that we're solely responsible for, so it's another project, cost that, another project of this nature, I haven't had to pay. So we recognize that this is an important entry into the city, we're trying to be stepped out of the locks of architecture. I, I guess I live in town, I see a lot that's been developed recently, I think this has been the best product in the city by far. We're excited to be here. This is a TOD project, and those of you who are familiar with that, the proximity to the transit station allows people to walk from their residence, that's the idea, walk to the transit station, that transit station, as we all know, has both bus and train, so you can get to the coast, you can get downtown, you can go to LA. I've taken it myself from my home to Union Station in Los Angeles. It takes a little bit of time, but you can do it. I think Escanito needs to recognize that these densities, and with the vibrant revitalization of downtown, that, you know, we're taking this agreement into the twenty-first century. One of the commissioners said that parking is going to be less required as we move forward. We're doing projects in my daytime job, we're doing projects in Portland that have a maximum half a space per unit, and we're building a hundred and fifty unit projects with thirty, forty, fifty parking spaces in the works. These are all one or two bedrooms, no three bedrooms, we're not getting large channels, this is one or two bedroom. And they will be leases apartments initially, leasing until the tenure, see, the problem with condominiums is they're big, so you have to wait the tenure, and then the phase of liability, so you can convert the condominium. It allows us to do that, it's a good strategy, it allows the ownership at some point in the future, but for the time being, also allows those who can't afford to buy a house to live in a one or two bedroom apartment in downtown Escanito. We have a growing educational system here in downtown Escanito, so I see so many younger kids coming here, and leasing a one-bedroom apartment, going to a car, you can walk to school. So anyway, I just think that this is the perfect location for this type of a project. I think we've gone out on a limb on the design, I think it's going to be quite unique, and we're hoping that it is, because we want people to be attracted to it. So with that, I just ask for your approval, and I'll be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Romo brought up something that I noticed as well, and that's that start side of the building, understanding that some point in the future, that'll probably, somebody will probably be building adjacent to that, but we don't know when, and it's going to be quite some time, potentially. Is there anything that you'd be willing to do to kind of help enhance that, or I, I mean, because the architecture all the way around is really good, really like it, but just to enhance that, some of the tile work, or something there, just provide a little more interest, to break that up a little bit. I see that you've done some, just a little more.
Yeah, I understand. When we initially designed this, it was a planned wall, or it was, because again, it's on the property line, it's a fire rated wall, so we can't do any projections through it, we can't go across the property line, but I do think that there's an opportunity that we can work with the city on. I know we, I want to bring in murals in the town, the definitions of our downtown, there could be some murals, some paint, we could use some kind of a articulated design with color variations, we have options, we can work with the city on that. I think that this project went through the staff design review board, and I wouldn't have a problem going back to the staff design review board, something on that wall, you know, this type of wall. As long as it's understood that it can't project out, and we've got to keep this simple, that's, that's all that's possible.
Understood, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mark Baker.
My office is located at six-one-three West Valley Parkway, suite number one-three-one-five in Escanito, and I'm also general partner of the office building located across the street from this project. I also sent a letter and dated September third, and it's attachment number two. I have no issue with the project, design or location, it would be a nice addition to the neighborhood, but as you would expect, I have an exception with the parking. Parking is at a premium everywhere in Escanito. Every morning, cars are parked bumper to bumper, south side of Grand Avenue, from Tulip to Redwood, and again in front of Hawthorne Feet. All of these are from the off-site, all of these are off-site parking from the residential development on the corner of Rand and Red. When designing our office building, we made a decision to overpark the building. By today's standards, we need a hundred and forty-three spaces, we have a hundred and eighty-seven. This has worked very well for us, and we have several tenants that have moved into the building because of the availability of the parking, parking for their clients and their employees. As a family business owner, for over eighty years in Escanito, currently employing over one thousand five hundred people, we re, we support responsible development. Allowing a residential project to move forward with forty-three parking spaces with fifty-two bedrooms is not responsible. Staff is requesting and recommending a parking management plan, which I understand would be a new concept for the city. The report speaks to mechanical vehicle lifts for all two-bedroom units, which would be installed after construction, if needed. Of course they'll be needed, with fifty-two bedrooms, forty-three parking spaces, they will be needed. I suggest to you, we solve the problem with upfront, a requirement during construction of parking lifts for every two-bedroom unit. This would then meet the city's requirement of minimum parking standards. This would also eliminate a difficult, messy parking management document that would be new to the city, that certainly could be very difficult to enforce. Parking requirements are there for a reason, and should be followed. I note that there is a movement towards smart parking, spearheaded by Sandag, however, this is not downtown San Diego, nor downtown Portland. Sandag's policies and visions for the future regarding parking and traffic are really unrealistic at this time. We should not let Sandag dictate Escanito's parking. You gentlemen are the gateway here this evening. You will receive several very similar proposals coming for you in the near future. What you do this evening will set the precedent for future projects for parking and design. I thank you, and one question to staff, if I could, is there any handicap parking required?
Correct.
And they're in the forty, okay, so that really reduces things down even more. Thank you again, I'll answer any questions in there.
Anthony Whitherberg, Whiteburg.
Good evening, my name is Anthony Whitherberg, I'm a four-year resident of Escanito, and I had purchased a home on the outskirts of the old downtown areas, a mile from this location, about three years ago. One of the reasons I decided to purchase in that area is because I noticed all the improvements and renovations, and everything's going on in the city of Escanito, and so that's why I decided to purchase there. I'd like to see that type of improvement and renovation extended to this gateway, and into the city, I think it'd be a definite positive for the city. I frequently dine at a restaurant there, we love the harvest, and I noticed that side, and I noticed a collection of all those people that are there, so it's kind of nice sort, and with issues with parking, I've never noticed in the past any issues with parking there when I've been there at that restaurant. So I just think it's going to be a positive improvement to be entered into the city.
Thank you.
Very much.
Heather Eelen.
Hi, good evening, I'm Heather Eelen. I own, with my family, Popper Country Store, so you'll be looking directly at this project of waiting when it's built, and beautiful, the way that it's presented by staff, they do such an amazing job, thank you. Our concern is parking. I know that you guys don't think so, you don't think, don't think that it's parking, but I promise you, it is, eight o'clock morning, hungry. So, I know that there are solutions available, you guys are brilliant people here, our staff is amazing, let's just look around, and not make exceptions, and make it happen. I like the little idea, the architecture's fantastic, it's beautiful, it's wonderful, but reducing the parking is just a noble for me.
Thank you. Sean Finch.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name's Sean Finch, fifteen-year resident of Escanito. I think redevelopment of this corner is long overdue, you can see this is a big, great addition to a prominent corner as you enter downtown area from Fremont. This development, I believe, is good for the city, brings additional housing, it's housing near downtown area, and all the amenities that provides, it's near the Sprinter, so you have the transportation aspect, which could help with the whole parking special that's going on tonight. I think ultimately it's good for downtown, and you need more bodies to promote downtown businesses that are there today, and are there in the future. I hope that you'll approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the slips I have, does anybody else want to discuss this?
Good evening, my name is Maritza Volcaba, and my family owns and operates Meatwala Kada Restaurant. We have been in Escanito for over thirty-five years. So our restaurant is located right directly across the street from this project, we're on the corner of Second Avenue and Quince. Our main concern with this project is the, again, parking, parking issue, that they're requesting a reduction in the parking requirements from sixty-one spaces to forty-three spaces. This is for thirty-two condos, we don't feel that this is enough parking for, with the Just considering some factors with, you know, that doesn't sound like that's enough guest parking, assuming that families live there, and they have multiple cars, assuming that people come and visit them, like their family members, or, you know, they have something going to their home. We anticipate some real consequences with having these condominiums directly across the street from us, with too few parkings available to them. If people are parking in our parking lot and leaving somewhere else, this is going to create a big strain on us as a business to regulate that, either by, we either have the higher security to be monitoring the parking lot, or, or we have to add additional cameras for the same purpose, to monitor the parking lot. We feel that the potential for people to abuse our parking area is very high, and basically it places the burden on us to monitor the problem. So we would just like to the city council to take into consideration all of the businesses in the area, because parking is at a premium in the area, please take into consideration our restaurant, Latinos Market, Swami's that is upcoming, you know, to be open, Hawthorne Store, and others, just before they make that decision in regards to reducing the parking allowance. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I just say, could you please bring the slip to the clerk? Maria Bowman.
Good afternoon, my name is Maria Bowman, and I'm the economic chairman for the Business Association. We are super excited and approved this project at our last meeting, and supported. I think you'll agree with me that it's a great improvement over the old gas station that was there. And the project that had been proposed before this project, after we sold the gas station, was for a truck food core. And the city seemed to be kind of approved of that, but I think the downtown association felt that it would have been too much competition for the restaurants in their area. So... So we think that this would be, uh, a project that now would benefit us. You know, the problem we had with homeless situation for the last ten years. We have worked with them, we have tried to help, and we had to change a little bit in the Mercado area. My dream was, of course, to have the old Hispanic architecture like the bank that you just approved, Bank of California Trust. But it's, it's, it's not possible. We need people to walk, to use public transportation. We need that, that change. We need to have people in the Mercado area twenty-four seven to discourage the damage that the homeless situation has caused in the past to our businesses. We have worked very hard for the rest twenty, thirty years to improve this area. So we would like very much to have this project approved, but it's very well presented. Thank you. And we wholeheartedly support it. Thank you very much.
Joe Lauren Aneen.
Joe, that was pretty good. Good evening. I am, uh, part of the orange project. I'm a teacher here in Escondido, Orange Island High School. I was a resident coach at Escondido for twenty-five years, and I teach economics. Um, listening to Maria is more what I would have expected here from a local businesswoman or entrepreneur than what I heard from local businesses, very honestly. A larger market needs more customers. And from what I understand, the vision for the future in this area is walking, which is why the cobblestone is going, it's going to look somewhat like a payboat only without cars going out. Is that not correct? I was pretty sure it was. Anyway, it would seem to fit that the ideal moving forward being smart cities, being here a public transit station that parking would be a consideration. Everyone's thinking it sounds like it, and that is mitigated by what's being presented. So, uh, yeah, I, I can only see the economy of downtown in Escondido improving as a thirty year resident, and again, a feature of this city for all those years. I can't see this being anything but positive. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything they want to add to this?
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one point? Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Um, we were unaware that parking would be an issue. The city code has provision to allow us to ask for fifteen percent reduction. We're not doing that. What we're doing is asking for eighteen spaces, however, because the staff has to deal with it. They have a plan, we have a backup plan. If it doesn't work, we implement the backup plan. This isn't going to be a build it and don't do anything if we have an issue. The good thing is, we have to plan to fix it after we come to an issue. Um, I, the, the problem is that people are afraid of what they don't know. And everybody in Escondido is used to a suburban neighborhood with a lot of cars and low density. This is how you do high-density transit oriented development. You have to reduce the parking to get the density, and you have to force people out of their cars. And if they don't get out of their cars, we'll have to, have to plan, it depends, prepare for our staff. So we have a backup plan. This is a one and done.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, has everybody? Is there anybody else? Anybody else wish to speak that hasn't spoke? I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for Commissioner to, uh, discuss.
Parking is always an issue. In just about every project that we see. But we are looking at, um, a transit-oriented development that's close to the Sprinter Station, um, it's close to downtown. I think that the people that are going to be looking at this sort of living arrangement, they know what they're kind of getting into. You know what? I think that the parking lifts, I think that's a incredible idea as a backup plan. We're going to have a parking management plan that'll be a part of this, uh, so that they can make sure that, you know, the parking needs are going to be met, uh, if there is an issue. It seems to me that having these, uh, lifts and the infrastructure already in and all that needs to be done is put the lifts in, I think that's a great alternative. I like the architecture, I like the density, I think it brings more people down, downtown. You know, the only other thing I'd like to see, uh, like we, like I indicated before, for the applicant is, um, just some improvements to that one side of the building. So, um, I can support this project.
I'd have to agree with my fellow commissioner. First of all, as a employee, it's a wonderful job. It's a great, it's a great looking building, it's got a lot of great features. Parking, as he said, is always going to be an issue. It was an issue two weeks ago, it was an issue one week ago, it's going to be an issue two weeks from today. But I believe that the direction that the town, the city is going is to support what you're doing. And more density, less cars, and you're right, the people that are going to move into something of this nature are going to be ones that don't necessarily want to drive their car anymore. And that is the way of the future, as Mr. Robson said. So I also, I also have to support this.
Well, after hearing all the businesses, them not wanting this project in the area, maybe the answer is, we don't want it. We leave it not being built up. Because that's what, that's what it's coming down to, the parking issue. Is there isn't an economic delta in these projects at this point in time. What that number is, I couldn't even begin to tell you, nor is it my consideration what that economic delta is. But if the business and it is, and the community around that area feel that the parking is that big an issue, this shouldn't be in that community any longer, it should remain that spot, maybe that is the vote of no. And leave that space just open and empty like that forever. Life is about give and take. And the goal sometimes is not always to want to be taking, taking, taking. And who's giving and who's taking in this matter, I don't know. By code and by Sandeg and everything else that's heard tonight, your parking is sufficient. By the community's demand or request out here, it is don't build. Just leave it that piece of dirt there for another ten years. Because they can't afford to go both ways. I do understand you can't afford to go down in the ground and build a bigger parking structure. The lifts will be, as you, as somebody would, there still won't be parking for their guests, and there won't be parking for other people. And there'll never be that parking. And that's, the real question is, is where does that become fair, equitable to everybody involved in this process? And right now, I can tell you, when I saw this project here, oh, this is awesome. This is going to make a difference in our community when people drive by and see it. And when they come in here and they drive past that first big apartment complex, and then they come to this, that'll start to set the scale for downtown. You're starting to bring yourself down into that downtown area, you're getting that feeling that we're slowing down. I'm not sure how to cope now after hearing the community. Maybe it is just a big piece of dirt for the next ten years. Maybe they'll figure out how to get the lifts. But I don't know if that project can take another half million bucks to get it, to make it work or not. I don't know if it's half a million bucks or a million bucks for those lifts. But at a certain point, it does not count as economically feasible for anybody to do that. Maybe it'll sit another day. I don't know. Things that we sit and consider all the time are those kinds of consequences as we're planning for this future of this community. It's not just your neighborhood. I understand it. I understand we have the retirement community right down the way as well as creating that issue. When you see that project there, you understand that those are older people, a lot of whom won't have two cars. There will be single-car families. And everything I've seen in the next ten to fifteen years, a lot of people aren't going to be driving any longer. Now, is that a long time away? For me, it's one-fifth of my life. That's not very long. For some of you, it's even shorter than that. I don't, I don't know. Those are the questions that I look at considering right now as we have this discussion. It's not just that kind of problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I too. Focused on the parking issue. Uh, it comes before us, it was successful, we have, uh, mandatory commission, mandatory commission, mandatory commission. And, uh, I, I think it'd be hard to rest if I, a greater opponent for infill development downtown, I mean, I, I, I'm a rest, I'm talking, but, uh, I am a big fan, but I think we need it downtown. I think if we bring people downtown, businesses will follow downtown, will thrive, and, and apparently not. But I think some good will come from that. People with money disposable incomes coming downtown. Um, and again, yeah, my voting records, I, uh, surely shows that I support infill development specifically downtown. The project, the design, I love it. I mean, it's a home, it is gorgeous. I could look back that back all the time, like with other things, I expect that'll probably be neighbored or bought by, uh, the community. Uh, the location, perfect. The look of this, in this location, is like a city ambassador. It's a welcoming one. I love it. Um, the footprint, I couldn't agree more with it. I think it's smartly done. But where I'm torn invariably is on parking. It's a concern for me. Uh, there is a variance requested here, twenty-nine and a half points against eighteen. I realize that, I, I'm hearing that it's black and white, all or nothing, but, uh, I'm wondering if there's a way, I don't know if the applicant would entertain it, I don't know, if the Commissioners would entertain it. But, but I, I would think, gosh, I mean, I'm so impressed with the, uh, with the novelty of the car lift that, uh, we're only eighteen spaces short, so I wonder if the applicant would entertain or if I could make a motion perhaps to approve it, but with, because I can tell you're going to get approval, I have that feeling. But, uh, with the addition of nine of these lifts to meet the deficit and get it to the eighteen at, at total, that would be my opinion. I recognize the cost of it. But, uh, you know, for my projects, uh, in Escondido, on a subject to the same parking law, it's, they're fairly stringent, and I've never gone over to them, nor have I ever asked for them. I've reviewed the site plans a few times with my architects late at night, my colleagues made it. So, uh, we did, and, um, so I'm not biased, I certainly don't think, but I did, I had to make them work by the, what it was required to do. Another thing, last thing I'll say on this is, um, we were told by the parking, uh, traffic engineer, who else spoke to him this year, a week or so ago, he said that, you know, generally referring to Aspire, it's a choice. And, and I think that's what appears out here tonight, too. It's a choice. Yeah, if it's a TOD, um, related development, that, that people know that going in, and it's a choice. My concern is, though, that some people will say, I want to live there so much, and this is such an appealing place, and it has a lot of appeal, that they'll say, I'll just convert my second car, uh, down the street car, and it may exacerbate the situation. I can see that happening. Perhaps not just with this one. But gosh, golly, when you look back at the Ivy Aspire and, well, just the others that were moving, and all have a deficit. I think for, for me, as much as I love this project, unless we could reach a compromise, I certainly, I could not support it unless we could perhaps work out a nine lift thing upfront instead of some, it seemed a little ambiguous to me, whether it'd be the trigger event to get those in later. But I guess to that end, it is procedurally, uh, can I do that? Can I make more?
Well, let me make a couple of comments.
Please, sorry.
I'm, I am not a proponent of high density, but when I saw this project, I was thoroughly pleased. It, it's coming to us, not asking for the maximum density that it could. This is the model project. I wish the projects that we've seen recently looked as good as this and weren't asking for ridiculous density. There's always going to be a parking problem. This, and let me say that I'm not in agreement with Sandeg and their studies and how they come about the need for parking. I also believe that you can find somebody that will do a, a study for you that will agree with the way that you want it to come out. However, being close to the Transit Center, the train station, there's a lot of parking over there. If somebody really wants to have a second car, they could park it over it. We've been told, the old DBA was told, park in the, in the, uh, train lot. Nobody parks there, there's lots of empty spaces. Well, we'll see how long that lasts. The fact that you have the, the ace in the hole as far as the lifts go really is the only thing that mitigates the parking problem. If you can control your parking problem, we can't do anything else about everybody else's parking on grand, because I know that that's a problem, and it's always a problem. It's always going to be a problem. But if we can control our own parking, and I, I, I agree, what is the trigger as far as putting those lifts in? I don't want to have any problems with parking. How fast can you get, can you get them? If you, if you leased out your maximum park and realized, well, we are almost out of parking, could you have those lifts in in a week, in a month? What, what's the timeframe? Do you have any idea? If, just answer that question.
Thank you, Chairman. The company that manufactures them is in central California, so they can be delivered within probably a week. So I would say within thirty days, we wouldn't have a dent in place.
Okay, thank you. I think this is a great project, and I, I, I plead with any developers that are going to come with other projects to make them look like this, because we now have a, something to base what we want projects to look like. And this certainly, uh, and as far as the back wall goes, I know that it looks really stark in this, but I think the reality is that the trees on Center City and the, the market down the street, I don't think it's going to look quite that stark, but that's something we can deal with. I don't know, some tile up there or something, I think you can work something out there. My only concerns, I'm fully in favor of this project, is the parking issue. What triggers those in? And you seem like you're not trying to pull anything over or looking for anything. At, at first, I was a little concerned about the public art money, but seeing this, I, it looks good, and it is definitely art, that the public will enjoy it. Anybody want to?
Part of the problem with, and I've thought of the transit area for a lot of these, is as we go ahead and fill up the transit area with overflow parking to the remainder of these other projects, because the people right across the street in the retirement community, if they do move into that, will start to eliminate that availability for other people and other residents of the community to use that transit area as a parking lot for the day-to-day, just like we have right now at Del Logos. That Del Logos parking lot now is full every single day. So mass transit is being used and utilized, because you can't park in that parking lot anymore. It's packed, and you're parking down in the mall itself or North County Fair, excuse me. And so you may start to see that occurring as well as having that overflow, then sucking up that parking lot during the day as well. And so consequently, then we'll have an exacerbated and a defeated mass transit strategy where people are parking in that parking lot that aren't even using the transit systems themselves for. And that's why now the parking rides are all down in North County Fair as well. And the bottom lot by Sears is full of parking folks in the mornings. That, that lot is full, and you'll see the vans all lined up there, fifty, a lot of people on. So, so I do, I do realize that we have that overflow parking right now in the Transit Center, but it could become contrary to us as well, where now we're stuck in that same situation. I think Mark's- I think Mark's solution is half now and half later might be something that'll make the residents happy, that that's going to be moving forward, or the businesses surrounding us, that that will be moving forward as well. Because what happens is, you realize you have a problem, and I'll use the Jack and Lock scenario where they had Camden Roomie years and years and years and years ago, and a lot of you might know that. The Camden Roomie showed up, and it ran for three months. They realized something strange about it, but it took them three months to figure out that it wasn't the right meeting of hamburgers. How long's it going to take for somebody to figure out that this parking's not working right? I don't know. But all the businesses around have said, they don't want this, and they don't want those customers, and they don't want anything to do with that.
Not all of them.
I understand, but the ones that spoke indicated.
Again, not all of them.
I understand, the ones that spoke, there was one, Maria was the only one that came forward with it.
We spoke and said it's a good project, especially for the parking.
Right. So you can't have both.
Very direct. I understand, but I think they could fix it with Mr. Watson.
Hey, the public hearing is closed, so let's leave.
But I'm okay having that. So, but that's where I'm at with it at this point.
You know, I'm also a plan of life trader, and I read a lot of different articles. Parking is now one of the primary things on all of these projects that are coming forth across the nation. And there's article after article after article being published, not by the developer community, although there are out there, they reference them, but it's by APA and Planetis and these sort of other organizations, they're planning organizations, that these people are looking off not only the issues we're dealing with today, but well into the future. And I'm seeing it more and more. And even when the parking expert came last week, or a couple of weeks ago on Aspire, he's saying this is the trend. The demand for parking is becoming less. People are utilizing other forms of transportation. And I think as we're moving forward with our climate action plan, this is the direction we want to go. We want to get people out of their cars. This pushes future residents that want to live and have this lifestyle, it gets them out of their car. It truly does. And I think this is the direction that the city wants to go, not only for redevelopment coming, but also to help with our climate action plan. So I'm thoroughly in support of this. I like the backup plan with the lifts. I think that helps on fail-safe, and I think it's a great project. But I would like to hear the motion that it sounds like Commissioner Watson's going to make, but I would like to hear his motion.
I think I'm going to go with a procedural limit here, because it's fairly apparent this is a fait accompli. But I guess I would make a motion to approve the project, condition the developer's agreement to take his solution just a little further and install nine lifts, which would be nine or eighteen. Three in short, because we need to double stack two, install sufficient lifts to address the parking deficit. Condition the developers.
For clarification on the motion, you want all lifts that were going to be, I don't know, the infrastructure was going to placed in, you want all the lifts in now, not half the lifts, all the lifts? And I'm just clarifying the motion.
I guess I'm sure, and I appreciate that. I don't think I was fully clear on the motion, so, but I think I'd like to hear. Can we do that? I think procedurally, can we ask how feasible it is for you to do some all-in, otherwise it's just an object.
Okay. I want to ask the developer then one question. Is it economically feasible to install all the lifts at this point?
Thank you, Chairman, Member of the Commission. It's probably more of a longer answer than I think. But the bottom line is, the city has a code that allows us to have fifty percent reduction. What you're telling me is that you're not going to grant any reduction, and I need to comply with a suburban parking requirement for one and two bedroom apartments in transit oriented development locations. And to that, I say we can't do that. I'd say that if you want to have, we have a program that the city and us are going to develop that's going to monitor the parking over time, and we have a program to implement if there's a parking problem. Why put a solution forward when there's no problem yet? What I would suggest is if you wanted us to add some more lifts, we can add three or five, maybe five at the max, just to see, because I guarantee you, this is not going to be an issue. We have one and two bedroom apartments. This is not a heavily parked type of development. As Commissioner said, planning is in the direction now where we are building these projects and people are living them without issues. So I can't agree to eighteen. I just can't do it. Eighteen, five years from now, it's an issue, but it could happen. So I'm comfortable. We can add, lead up to five, but at that point, you know, we're not even, there's no reason to even have a code revision to a lot of the ads if you're going to require it.
Thank you. Commissioner Watson, I would like you to withdraw what you asked, because I agree with the applicant. I think if there's not a problem, let's not fix it. What, the parking reduction we granted at the last project was way more than this, and it's going to have way more impact on downtown. It didn't seem to bother any of the other commissioners. This one doesn't bother me, and the other one did. I would make a motion, if you'd like to revise your motion, to just approve this project with the understanding that if there is a problem, he will address it. He has a way out, at least to provide the parking. And I don't, it's possible he could install those and they never be used.
Well, okay, I'll respectfully withdraw my motion, but I guess I would condition that understanding a little more fully. What is the triggering event in the plan that says we will bring in the lifts? I don't understand that.
I'm confused, because he just said he'd give us.
And I'll further condition my withdrawal on, yeah, that's right, I think that's a step in the right direction, and I think the developer, that's an olive branch, a big olive branch, that Mr. McCoy is offering, and perhaps a metric by which others may be helped too as well. So then I move to accept five lifts and approve the project.
I'll second the motion.
Why is this, can I get some over going normally? Do you have this?
We have five as well. That is approved. PHG eighteen dash zero zero two one, the condition that provides five. Okay, we're going to go on to G two, which is PHG seventeen dash zero zero two six, request for a master and precise development plan modification.
Good evening, Chairman Span and Planning Commissioners. Apparently Jade is a very good presenter. I've got big shoes to fill or a tough act to follow here. I'm Adam Feinstone, Principal Planner here at the City of Escondido. Project for us tonight is a master and precise development plan modification for City Plaza. City Plaza is an existing mixed-use project in the Southern Gateway District of the Downtown Specific Plan. Specifically, the location here is on the southeast corner of Escondido Boulevard and Third Avenue. The picture on the right side shows the, as an aerial during construction, you can see the building kind of halfway there. It's since been completed, obviously. The requirement tonight for the master and precise development plan modification is twofold. First, anytime there's an increase in residential density, there is a requirement for, or I should say, anytime there's an increase in residential density on a planned development project, that increase requires an amendment or a modification to the master plan, and that does have to go before City Council. Additionally, any change in permitted land uses also has the same requirement. Thus, the master and precise development plan modification is required, and it does go through Planning Commission for recommendation and then all the way to City Council for their ultimate consideration. Current condition on site, this project was approved in two thousand and seven, City Plaza. It sat halfway built, or portion slightly built, for a number of years during the economic downturn, and construction was finally completed in two thousand and eighteen. The facility currently is comprised of fifty-five residential units, approximately ninety-three hundred, maybe ninety-two hundred and fifty square feet of commercial space, and a hundred and twenty-two parking spaces in an at-grade and subterranean parking garage. Here's the existing project there as it sits today. It's already obviously complete. The commercial spaces that are existing here are along Escondido Boulevard and Third Avenue The residential units are above on both sides there. There's a clock tower in here, some nice closets and open spaces in the front there on the corner. Coming out is a very attractive building. At this point, the applicant has proposed to relocate the existing gym into one of the commercial suites in order to turn that gym area into an additional residential unit. So the residential unit would go into the location where the gym had previously been placed. That gym would be relocated into about nine hundred and fifty square feet of commercial space on the ground floor. It would remain a residence-only gym, so it would not, it would basically take that commercial square footage offline. That commercial area would no longer be available for commercial lease, so it would reduce the amount of space that's available for that commercial use. Ultimately, the increase would be one additional dwelling unit, which would change the residential density of the site from sixty-seven, sorry, to sixty-eight and three-quarters units per acre to seventy units per acre. Project site within the Downtown Specific Plan allows up to a hundred units per acre, so it is still within that range. There'd be no exterior modifications to the site, and there would be no increase in building square footage. It's simply swapping locations of uses, reducing the amount of commercial square footage, and increasing the number of residential units. The applicant has also proposed to change the list of permitted uses that are allowed for the project. Originally, the project, when approved in two thousand and seven, identified a specific list of commercial uses that were permitted or conditionally permitted. Since that time, the Downtown Specific Plan has been updated, and among other things, it's included a modification or actually a very robust matrix of permitted land uses. At this point, the applicant has requested to remove their specific list of permitted land uses that apply only to their property, and to rely instead on the matrix that's included with the Downtown Specific Plan. This would do two things that would be Steph's is beneficial. It would allow flexibility for the applicant in leasing their commercial spaces. I think we've all kind of come to notice, getting commercial spaces in these mixed-use projects these days is a little bit tough to lease, so it would definitely allow them some flexibility there. In addition, it would create efficiency on Steph's, and when we're looking at proposals for new businesses in these facilities, to not have to dig into each individual project, say, oh wait, is this type of use allowed here? We would just look at the main, at the specific plan to get that information and give them a thumbs up and a thumbs down. So one of the main considerations for the project when it was originally constructed, wait for it, parking. At this point, back in two thousand and seven, when the project was built, they did a parking demand analysis and determined that a twenty-two space reduction was warranted. That would have reduced the parking requirement from one hundred and forty-eight spaces down to one hundred and twenty-six spaces. During construction, water intrusion in the basement garage resulted in the elimination of additional four parking spaces in order to make way for mechanical and ducting equipment. Thus, the current site, as it exists today and as construction completed, has one hundred and twenty-two parking spaces on site. With regard to the current demand, residential units, the residential unit would increase the number of spaces required by two. However, the reduction in commercial square footage would decrease that number by four, so you're looking at a net decrease in parking demand of two spaces. Applying the reduction allowed by the shared parking analysis to the current proposal and using the current Downtown Specific Plan requirements of parking, one hundred and twenty-one spaces are necessary, as shown on the table here. What you basically see is that there were one hundred and forty-eight spaces required when it was processed. They were allowed, or as of today, I should say, the Downtown Specific Plan would require the project as it is currently to have one hundred and forty-five spaces. Twenty-two space reduction that was allowed as part of the shared parking analysis would give you a requirement for, or it would give you one hundred and twenty-three space need, one hundred and twenty-two provided, so you'd be one space deficient. Going to the current request, with that kind of swap out of commercial versus residential square footage use, that kind of thing, you wind up with a one-space surplus using the same methodology. It should also be noted, as we have this discussion, both for this purpose and just in general, that Steph has really not had much in the way of any complaints or had any, heard any concerns regarding parking at this facility. So this facility was about, I guess, twenty out of a hundred and fifty spaces, fifteen percent. I don't know if the math's wrong, but you know, that type of reduction on a site here, and it's not exactly, it's not immediately adjacent to transit or to the transit station, although I knew there is a bus route that goes up and down Escondido Boulevard, so just food for thought generally there. As far as this project environmental review, a negative declaration was adopted for the project when it was originally constructed or proposed back in two thousand and seven. The modification that is being proposed today is covered by that previously adopted negative declaration, and therefore no further environmental documentation, documentation is required. As a result of the foregoing, Steph recommends approval, or the Planning Commission adopted resolution number two thousand and nineteen dash nineteen recommending City Council approval of the proposed master and precise development plan modification. Steph would also like to bring to the Planning Commission's attention that there has been a condition applied to this project, which would require the applicant to participate in the recently created Downtown Specific Plan Density Transfer Program, and it would be considered a sending area. They would be required to basically put their remaining density that is not being used at this point into the density bank for further future use by potentially another developer. So that's, this is, I think, the first project that we've got where that is going to be implemented as a sending area for a new project. At this point, I'd be open to any questions that the commission may have.
Mr. Feinstone, fine presentation. But I'm not saying that because I complimented Mr. Paul. You do a very fine job. We do appreciate it. You know, there were a lot of moving parts here and a lot of different numbers, and I appreciated, you know, the presentation, but also the staff report, because at first I was a little confused until I really read through the staff report. And you were very concise in getting all these numbers and showing where everything moved around, and I appreciated that. But other than that, I don't have any real questions, but thank you.
Great, great presentation, and you know I'm grateful, and you're noted for being concise, but you was holding permission, I'm grateful. One question, as a sender, how many units?
I believe the number is twenty-four. I'm not positive, but it's, they're basically, they would be allowed eighty based on density, so yeah, they'd be sending twenty-four units.
Thank you so much.
No further questions, Stan? Thank you so much. I have one request here by the applicant, Andrew Haddon?
I have a few questions. It's great to be here. I'm with HPNA Architects, or Two Forty Market Place. I'm just here to really entertain. Any questions you have, or email. I know it's not as beautiful as that last project, but we'll try to. Actually, I think it's a really nice project. I mean, I like it every time I drive by it. So, yeah, I think it's a great project. The only question I have, and you may or may not be able to answer, well, I have a couple of questions. The commercial spaces, are these all leased out, or are there some vacancies? And I just drove by there the other day, and I, quite frankly, I just don't remember. I think there's three vacancies currently. Okay, so. Out of seven. Yeah, so this is still a little bit of a problem with our ground floor commercial, trying to get somebody in there, apparently. How about the rest of the project? Is it a hundred percent? It's a hundred percent leased out. Okay, so what we're seeing here then, at least based on staff's view of parking here is, now there's twenty-five percent that are still left open, that aren't being utilized now. That's at seven o'clock at night, so most of the time, these businesses would be closed anyway. So we're already kind of seeing what's happening. It seems like that it's a hundred percent leased out, but only seventy-five percent of the parking spaces are taken up. Now, I didn't do the math, and I probably should have, where I speak right now, but whether or not that's a, you know, one-to-one, you know, each unit is taking up one parking stall or something like that. But anyway, I did notice that in the staff report, and I appreciate it, staff going out and taking a look at that to see that, you know, what the parking situation was out there. But I don't have any other questions. I think it's a beautiful project. I really do.
One more question here.
Oh, no question.
Oh, you don't? Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Does anybody else in the audience want to talk on this in any way? Public hearing is closed on that, and ask for discussion.
So Commissioner Wireley, what you're saying is people are actually getting out of their cars. Is that true?
You know, here's an example. And you know what? I'm going to go back, and I'm going to look in the staff report, because I didn't think, just see. You know what? There's a fixed number of units here, and, you know, it's a, they're only using one parking stall. I don't know. Here's the trend. It just seems like maybe that's, it's truly happening right here on our project.
If this was coming to us today, they'd be asking for a lot bigger reduction in parking. It's unfortunate that back during the crash, we didn't have more developers building concrete parking structures than go under, so that somebody could take it over and finish the project in an affordable manner, and we could end up with parking like this one has and like Gladys.
You're probably right.
So, like, that's a requirement, and it's still got, right? And like, decide that that's asking, it's going to happen, it's going to be just a bunch more of this than one space. But do you choose?
Yes, so, just to clarify this.
About the same parking issue.
This project is a mixed-use project that has a commercial component and a residential component. So overall, the parking that's available is, if you were to say, let's not think about the commercial, you've got more than two spaces per residential unit, but those that are shared would be commercial. So it's a little different situation, but it is a reduction in the fact that in parking, based on the shared ability of those spaces, shared usability.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. PHG seventeen zero zero two six.
A second.
We're going to have to record. All right, guys, we have five yes votes.
Okay, we have five yes votes. So with that passed, it's PHG seventeen oh oh two six. Okay, we have no current business. Does anybody in the audience have anything they want to say under oral communication? Seeing none. Plenty of commissioners, any comments? Oh, I just had one thought, too, and I think it might be, I don't know if anybody remembers, Billy, you might remember the murals that came down off the old building. I don't even remember the name of it. Was it Sears, the old Sears building? Did all those murals get used? I know of one's on that.
No, there's some on the children's museum across the street, and then I believe they packed up and stored the balance.
There was some on that, I think.
I was just thinking, wouldn't it look great on the backside of that building? Okay, future, our next meeting is in two weeks.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. We are.